I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this Planning Commission meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54953, in that Commissioner Alderetti will be participating in this Planning Commission meeting by speakerphone. In accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. Please bear with me while I briefly go through some special procedures required by the Brown Act. I would now like to request that Commissioner Alderetti respond to the following questions. Commissioner Alderetti, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Great. Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes, I was.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes, sir.
Is there any member of the public there with you who would like to participate in the public comment portion of this meeting or otherwise address any agenda item for this meeting?
No, there is not.
Okay, great. I would now like to ask that any member of the Planning Commission speak up at this time if such a commissioner has not been able to clearly hear Commissioner Alderetti. You guys can't hear? Ladies? Lady? Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that all commissioners present have indicated that they were able to hear Commissioner Alderetti clearly. I would next request that any commissioner, including Commissioner Alderetti, speak up at this time if such a commissioner has any reason to believe, based on voice recognition or otherwise, that the person representing himself to be Commissioner Alderetti is not truly so. Hearing no comment, the record should reflect that no commissioner has expressed doubt that Commissioner Alderetti is participating by teleconference along with planning commissioners present here. I would now like to advise the Planning Commission and the Secretary that any votes taken during the teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. With that being said, will the Secretary please proceed with roll call?
Eric Alderetti?
Here.
Phil Becerra?
Here.
Bruce Bauer?
Here.
James Gartner?
Here.
Sean Mill?
Here.
Mark McLaughlin?
Here.
Lynette Verino?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to move one item on our agenda from a work study. It's noted as item number six. We're going to move that up to the actual business calendar, and we'll hear that item after item number four. So it'll be the last item after the public hearing. We'll work on the item number six. And item number five is going to be postponed. Is that correct? For another meeting?
Yes, please.
Perfect. This portion of me is for public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? If so, you may fill out a request to speak for him, but the Secretary, and after introduction, have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the chairman. Anyone out there have any non-agenda items? Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion and a second? Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner McLaughlin, a second by Commissioner Bauer. You did that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Alderetti participating by teleconference. Do we have any communication disclosures for agendaized items by any of the Planning Commissioners? Seeing none? Oh, none? Okay. Let's move into item number one. And my understanding is there's a request for continuance?
On item number one, we have a written request for continue, excuse me, to have the item pulled, continue to a date uncertain. When we do this in response to applicant's request, it means that we will be renoticing people because there is no specific date. So you do not necessarily, you do not have to take an action on this item. On items where you are continuing it to a date certain, such as the next one, you will have to have a motion and a second to continue the item.
So right now, this item is essentially just pulled from the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Candida, when that happens, and you say that we have to renotice, is that cost passed along to the applicant or do the taxpayers pick that up?
The applicant, yes. Thank you.
Your mind read your question, Commissioner. Curious myself. Then let's move forward with item number two. And I understand we're going to let the applicant speak about that? I believe there's a request, potential request on a continuance. Normally, we have the staff, but we'll flip it around today.
All right. I'm Ricardo Rebe. I'm the Department Honorable. I'm requesting a continuous to May 9.
To May 9. And we would need to discuss that and take action on that.
That is correct. Does anyone else wish, did your representative wish to speak on this item as well?
Hi, I'm Richard Garcia. I'm the project manager for this project. And we asked the Planning Commission to please request for the two weeks. We would appreciate that.
Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicants? Okay.
Thank you very much.
So we'll bring that back to discussion, motion, and a second. Do you have a motion?
I'll make motion that we continue this item till May 9.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Commissioner Mill, and a second by Commissioner Becerra. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Alderetti participating in a teleconference. Oh, for every vote, we have to do a roll call? That's correct. Okay, so let's do a roll call for that voter. For the record, or if it's unanimous, do we have to do a roll call for? What's the city attorney say?
No, if it's unanimous, you do not have to do a roll call.
We'll move on to item number three, and Pamela's presenting this. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Gartner, members of the Planning Commission. So here we have our project for Restaurant Acapulco. It's CUP number 2016-14. And the project will be located at 2429 West McFadden Avenue, Unit 106. And so here you can see the project's location. It's highlighted in yellow. The restaurant is located within an existing shopping center at the northeast corner of McFadden and Sullivan. The business is within the arterial commercial zoning district, and it's surrounded by residential and commercial land uses. So Restaurant Acapulco, it's formerly known as Takari Acapulco, will be moving from their current location at Unit 108 to a new space next door. They've been located at Unit 108 for the past 20 years. The new location will combine Units 106 and 107. The application requires a conditional use permit to allow an ABC license for the sale of beer and wine at the new location. And their former location, at Unit 108, did have an ABC license and has had it for about 15 years since 1999. And so here you can see a site plan. The new location is shaded in yellow, and the old location is just to the right. Here we have the floor plan. The storage and display of alcohol areas is highlighted in yellow. The storage and display is less than 5% of the gross floor area. And here we have a current site photo. As you can see, there's some construction going on. The construction is related to the renovation of the new space. Right now, they're putting in a grease interceptor, and they have pulled the plumbing permits for that. And so this restaurant is a well-known, family-owned eating establishment in the neighborhood. As I said earlier, it has been there for about 20 years now. The project will provide additional dining amenities to residents and visitors. And so they intend to expand operations by moving to a larger space. And existing operational standards will ensure that the facility will remain an eating establishment and maintain a safe and attractive environment in the neighborhood. And so staff recommends approval of CUP number 2016-14 as conditioned.
I have a quick question.
Yes?
Did your presentation just say they were looking for a beer and wine license?
Beer and wine, yes.
Because here it says beer, wine, and distilled spirits on item three.
On item? Yeah, it should be beer and wine.
So distilled spirits is?
Not, it's going to be a type 41 license. It should be beer and wine.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions from commissioners for staff?
I have one question. It just looks like, appears from the picture, that they might be out of compliance on the signage on the front windows. So I just wanted to make sure that the applicant's aware that that will not be acceptable in the new location.
I have spoken to the applicant about that, and it's one of the conditions that they do update all of the signs and bring them into compliance. And so for them to activate the conditional use permit, they will have to do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing. However, do we have any other written communications on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
This is time and place for the public hearing on item number three. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please file a request to speak for him with the Secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension is granted by the chairman. The action of the Planning Commission is final, following consent of the City Council, unless, if allowed by the San Antonio Municipal Code, an appeal to the City Council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within 10 days from the date of the commissioner's action, or unless set for public hearing by the City Council. I do have one speaker card. Leon Jacobs?
So representing three of the neighborhood associations, Bella Vista, New Horizons, and possibly... At our last meeting, we had three. I'm not sure of that very last one, but I'm pretty sure it's Mid-City. But anyway, my issue is that the spirits, the spirits was an issue. You had a question with that. I have a question with the security of the area. The security of the area. The security guard leaves at 10 o'clock, and the Pizza Loco and the Acapulco restaurant are not covered. So if they, somebody comes out and has a problem with the alcohol, I think we got a problem. You know, and there are other people around. You know, there are a lot of people out. This is a neighborhood facility. It's a neighborhood.
Little shopping center.
Yeah, it's a strip mall, right? It's got a little religious articles place. It's got a little 99 cent store. It's got a laundry mat. It's got a little mini-market. So if people want to buy other alcoholic beverage, it can be right there. I was just opposed to the situation of not being covered, one, and that spirits, item two. So I wish you could address that issue as far as covering it for security.
Any other comments? It looks like there's no distilled spirits in this one. They pulled it out. It's just beer and wine.
Correct.
No hard liquor, apparently.
Chairman Gartner, I... There's a lot of places that have alcohol around there. That mini-market has alcohol across the street. Lee Market has alcohol. The, across the street, which is Ranch Market, they have alcohol, and they have a bar over there. And there's this little tiny shop called Exquisite, Exquisito, or something like that. It comes like a little tutti fruity shop. It's like that, but it's quaint. But if something like this was to have those spirits that we were talking about, I would vehemently oppose this situation.
So you're, just for clarification, so are you opposed to the beer and wine?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. I'd like for them to actually raise the price.
Because I think all they're asking for is beer and wine. Am I correct? Mr. Mill?
Currently, they have beer and wine at their location now. Has there been any issues at this location that you know about?
That I've been in there and actually witnessed? Probably one, one, but I just wanted to, like I said, I'm one of the leaders in the area, and I just wanted to get everybody up and up with that one.
Okay.
Commissioner? I have actually a question for staff on this one. My question is kind of related to what this gentleman's asking. The previous CUP, which in here is 99-18?
That's correct.
So that one didn't require security past, I'm assuming past 10 o'clock, or at all?
So, right now, I guess we do have the operational standards, which were put in about two years ago. And so these, this new license will be subject to those standards as well as the ABC standards.
Well, what I'm asking though is the previous CUP, did it have any requirement for it? In other words, as they're applying for this new CUP, I understand that the new standards will take effect. What I'm asking is, did the previous CUP have any sort of similar standard that required them to have security?
No, it did not.
Okay, so then this one would. And do the standards have a timeframe to which they would have to? Is it like any time that they're open or until a certain point in the evening?
The operational standards?
Regarding the security.
The previous CUP was adopted in 1996?
1999.
1999. And at that time, we probably were not, we were not applying the same level of standards to individual CUPs that we do now. And they were not standardized. So regarding the, regarding the operational, you know, hours of operation, it's our understanding that there was no limitation on the hours of operation, that they could serve alcohol. They were merely concurrent with the times that they were serving food. So it had to be, it was an eating establishment. At this time, they operate, and they're open until 10 o'clock on weekdays and midnight on the weekends. So they want to continue that same, those same hours of operation with this permit. If there is a security guard, it may be for the whole complex, for the... It's not mandated by the CUP, but it may be for the shopping center itself. Is that, is that the case? You said that the security leaves at 10 o'clock?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess my question, let's go back to my question, which was, under these standards that we have codified, I just, I don't have them in front of me, unfortunately, does it require security for this use while they're open?
Not for this use, no. Not a security plan. If it were an entertainment, it would.
So the entertainment, and are they applying for entertainment?
They have applied for a category two entertainment permit, and it has been approved.
And it has been approved. And did the, I guess, under the entertainment permit, was there any requirements for security?
Not for a category two, no.
So there was? Okay, thank you.
It might be helpful if you explained what a category two allows, which is no dancing, and it's mariachi, it's small music. But it's a lower level down. It's not a band. They can't have a dance floor.
Chairman, could we actually stipulate that a half an hour before they leave, they can't drink? No?
Well, I suppose you could. You could, but I don't think we would offhand. I mean, I don't, I can't speak for my fellow commissioners, but offhand, it sounds like a normal, kind of a restaurant request. It doesn't seem unusual. It's not a nightclub. Doesn't seem like a kind of a place that you would restrict them. You know, other than what the ABC would restrict, which is 2:00 a.m., I guess. They're not applying for after-hours. Is that right? It's just till 12:00?
Till midnight.
So they're kind of in a reasonable zone at this. I wouldn't probably want to add that to this, if that's a question. But that's just me speaking. I mean, certainly, we haven't had a discussion up here yet.
Okay.
But it sounded like, if I heard you correctly, you were not opposed to the beer and wine?
Not opposed to the beer and wine, but you know...
And that's all they're applying for, apparently.
Okay. We'll have to revisit this maybe.
Yeah, because I had asked that earlier, because it said distilled spirits, but it's just beer and wine.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other people out there, speakers, that have not filled out a card but would like to speak on this subject? Because... Besides the applicant? Are you the applicant? So you would like to speak, a member of the public? I'll save the applicant for last. You'll have to help me with the pronunciation.
This is my father, Dukyum. My name is Helen Yum. I'll be translating for him.
Oh, great.
He's the landlord of the property.
Okay.
He, his primary purpose in coming to the meeting tonight was to make two primary points about the move of the restaurant. We'll be moving to an adjacent location that speaks to the success of the restaurant. It's a small local business. He's really put his support behind it and wants to try to find a way to help it grow. They currently have an alcohol license for beer and wine. They'll be giving that up in order to move to the new space. So we're not trying to add any kind of impact to the area.
Just swapping locations.
Yeah, we're transferring or swapping. As my father sees it, he is interested in trying to, I mean, it's an old restaurant. You know, they've been there in the same location for 20 years. Same primary, same equipment, same decor. He's interested in updating all of the equipment, all of the cooking appliances. And his primary interest in this is twofold. One, is that he wants to find a way to bring new technology to food and find ways to make it more efficient, more healthy. And he also wants to bring added value and attraction to the area by bringing in something that is new. And he really has an eye on wanting to renovate and give the area a facelift.
Sounds good.
Additionally, he says that with regards to the security problems, that in the entire time that he's been there, he hasn't had any major issues. But he remains committed to making sure that security is in place.
Past 15 years, we don't have any problem for the sale of ABC license.
Great. Are there any questions to the applicant? Commissioner Verino?
So is the security currently hired by your, do you currently hire the security?
Sure. The security guard is for the entire complex. It's for the whole shopping center.
And is it true that they go, they're off duty at 10:00 p.m. on the weekends?
Okay. My father says that after hearing the concerns from the community today, he would like to extend the weekend hours to be concurrent with the hours that the operating, that the restaurant is open, operating, and selling alcohol. So he'll be in negotiations with the security company.
So that's what, Mr. Jacobs, you were talking about that earlier, right? Okay, so you're good with that? Okay, well, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Any other questions? Excuse me. One more question. Commissioner Bauer?
One more question. I very much appreciate you doing that and listening to the concerns of the neighbors and making that gesture. I'd ask one other thing. Commissioner Verino had pointed out some of the problems with the signage. And that's a big bugaboo, as far as I'm concerned, and it's a problem that's endemic in the city. But it looked like there were violations of city signage rules. If you could take a look at that as well.
Sure.
I very much appreciate that. Thank you very much for your concerns and for addressing that.
Any other questions?
We tried, I tried my best. They're going to convert, newly update new computerized stores.
Great.
Very good.
Very good. Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. Do we have any other guest speakers besides the applicant? Okay, I think the applicant wanted to speak.
Hello, my name's Halwin. I'm representing Roberto Toto, the tenant. Basically, all she wanted to do was just update her restaurant to a newer space. And she's been having this beer and wine for 15 years, no problems. And just, her space was old. I mean, everything needed to be updated, and she wanted her customers to have a better experience there. And, I mean, everything's getting updated, even outside. ADA compliance, we're complying with everything. There was some stuff that weren't compliant. The landlord's willing to fix all of it. Restrooms are getting updated. And then, I mean, as far as energy efficiency too, LED lightings. I mean, this whole space is going to be much better now, so.
Sounds like you have a good landlord, too, so.
Yeah, so he's willing to do all that.
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Becerra? Commissioner Verino? Commissioner Mill? Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. We did not have any written communication on this, correct? So I would like to bring this back to the commission for discussion and/or motion. Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one quick question. So for the security that's on the site, I guess I understand it to be there until near the time that the restaurant closes. How early is it there? Is it there the whole time that the shopping center is operational? Or is it just pertaining to like maybe nighttime operations at the restaurant?
From noon.
So from noon until closing time? Okay, all right. Well, with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution for CUP number 2016-14. I'd like to add a condition. Condition would be number three to, you know, per what was discussed here at this meeting, to require security at the center from noon until the close of the restaurant in the evening. And then one other item, I hate to be nitpicky on this. I noticed that condition one refers to the McFadden Harbor Business Center Sign Program. Is that, does that, is there standards in there that's correlating to this shopping center?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, so just the additional condition, number three, is my motion.
Second.
Second. So we have a motion with an added condition and a... So we have a motion with an added condition and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Alderetti on a teleconference call. Okay, great, congratulations. Go for it. Okay, item number four, Ali.
Thank you, Chairman Gartner. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Up for review tonight is tentative tract map number 2016-1 for the property located at 1406 North Harbor Boulevard. This is a project by City Ventures called the North Harbor Town Homes. This project proposes to construct 38 townhomes in approximately eight different buildings, as well as to provide onsite open space through a central open space and play area, as well as a rear dog park. This is the site as it appears today. Site is currently developed with a commercial use in the front and remains largely vacant for the majority of the site towards the rear. It's surrounded by multiple family residences to the north and the south, as well as single family residences to the west, and then commercial uses to the east across Harbor Boulevard. This is a site photo as the site appeared as of last week. And this site and open space plan shows the proposed development consisting of the four buildings stretching from Harbor Boulevard west towards the rear of the site, as well as the open space areas. The primary open space areas are highlighted in light green comprised of a central courtyard and primary open space area, as well as a rear dog park and half-court basketball facility, and then supplementary passeos and private patios and balconies. And this is the proposed tract map showing the configuration of the project, several of the street improvements that are required for the project, and the 38-unit air rights condominium subdivision as proposed. So the project itself is allowed by right by the Harbor Mixed Use Transit Corridor specific plan. Tonight's action is to approve the tentative map to allow the subdivisions that these units can be sold as individual units for individual ownership. The project contributes to the surrounding area by helping to redevelop an underutilized lot with something more permanent as a residential use that affords primarily ownership opportunities to first-time or multiple-time home hires. As well as that, the applicant is proposing to construct six affordable housing units onsite as part of the project's compliance with the city's Housing Opportunity Ordinance. Onsite open spaces will also provide much-needed open space to the folks living in the community and any visitors. Based on this analysis, staff recommends approval of tentative tract map number 2016-1 as condition. Be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Bauer?
Ali. The elevation for the front on Harbor doesn't differ in any market way, does it, with the other elevations? It's all the same?
That's correct. They've all been designed to be largely similar.
And I thought, in some of the previous projects we had approved on Harbor, that they differentiated the elevation, the front-facing elevation, so that, you know, they had higher first-story, for example, and made it appear more commercial, like a business work space. Is that within the keeping, or is that within the design guidelines of the Harbor District?
Sure. The Harbor Plan affords a variety of architectural styles and development styles, as well as what's called frontage types to developers. Frontage types are how buildings relate to the street and the sidewalk. An applicant may elect to do a more raised frontage type, or a more commercial-looking shopfront style, or a more traditional residential style. In this case, the applicant elected to proceed with the more traditional residential style, albeit with a larger front patio to provide a buffer from Harbor Boulevard.
So are we not, as a city, though, we're not trying for a consistent view and look on Harbor? I mean, it'd be my preference that you're going down Harbor, that you see, you know, we have a number of developments that we've already approved, and they have that sort of set look, that we keep it somewhat consistent. We just left it, left it open? I mean, and part of this may be the problem, we haven't had our sub, we had a subcommittee, a design review committee, and I would have voiced these kind of concerns within the context of that meeting, we haven't had that. So I'm voicing it here, which is my only avenue.
The Harbor Plan has design guidelines for infill developments such as this project. One of the guidelines states that it actually discourages architecture that doesn't really have a history along the Harbor Corridor. So some applicants have proposed a lot of, for example, Spanish-style architecture. The Harbor Corridor does not necessarily have a history of Spanish-style architecture. This project originally, when submitted, did have Spanish-style architecture. After taking into account numerous factors, such as its proximity to the future fixed guideway, the applicants, following suggestions based on the design guidelines, revise the plans to a more contemporary look, to perhaps target a different audience that may be purchasing the product because of its proximity to light rail in the future, let's say, a more walkable environment. So there's no mandated architectural style along the corridor. The plan gives options to developers to elect their style.
Well, I would think then, along with what you're saying, is that, you know, we sort of have approved these projects with these guidelines in mind before, and I don't know that we've had any that are strictly sort of residential looking, have we? Do we have any?
About a year ago, the Planning Commission acted on a vesting tentative tract map for 520 South Harbor. That was a mixture of craftsman, contemporary, and Spanish-style architecture that was purely residential. The lot was actually ironically very similar in size and shape and frontage to this one. It was just south of McFadden. And just south of this project, about one parcel away, there's another development that's happening that's featuring contemporary live-work style architecture in the front, and then a mixture of residential styles in the rear. And then this project is proposing mostly contemporary or all contemporary architecture. Other projects that have come through have proposed Spanish revival or contemporary as well. So it is an eclectic mix of architectural styles that we're finding more and more.
And then, is there a preference within the Harbor Plan for commercial at the front, on the front part of it? There's a small part of this, this long corridor development infill. I mean, do we have a preference that the front-facing portion of that, if it can be, wherever possible, we reserved for work-live element or commercial element?
The Harbor Plan does not explicitly state a preference for commercial at the front. It does allow it, and staff works with applicants, depending on the lot configuration and the size, to see if those opportunities can be realistically woven in. Going back to the example provided earlier, just south of the site, because of the large frontage and the availability for surface parking and other parameters, staff was able to encourage the applicant to provide live-work units, so about 15 on those. Because of the narrow frontage and the very deep scale of this lot, providing commercial uses at the front is a little bit more difficult, just from a development economics perspective.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, Ali, thanks.
Sure.
Do we have any written communication on this project, besides, there's an email looks like in front of us here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's from Jack Noinix, indicating opposition to the project that has been distributed to all commissioners.
So that's the only one, then? Okay.
May I ask a question of that? Did they indicate what, why they were opposed? There's no indication other than the communication we received here?
I think it said they prefer not be a residential tract.
Right, that's it.
That's it. I'd like to bring the, open up the public hearing portion. Does any members of the public who have filled out one of these or have not filled out one of these wish to speak? How about the applicant? Is the applicant here?
Good evening. I'm Kim Bridgetale, Vice President of Development for City Ventures. Myself and the design team is here to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? No, we're quiet, bud. Ah, Commissioner Bauer?
Did you consider, you heard the discussion earlier, and I voiced my concern, my preference, actually, is that, you know, especially along Harbor Boulevard, because it's a busy corridor, it's, you know, sort of central in the city, that the lower portion of the development appear, at least on the facade, the front-facing elevation of the development, that it appear to have some sort of commercial aspect to it, and they've done that, they've utilized that, or done that with other developments by, with an elevated first floor, you sort of mimic in a way, a commercial look, although it's residential. Did you consider that alternative?
We actually, as Ali stated, we actually came in with a totally different elevation initially, and we went over a whole bunch of different options with him and staff over time, and we kind of played with it, and we really felt like because our frontage is so minimal on Harbor, we really wanted to use materials to give that kind of more, I mean, I wouldn't say a commercial feel, but we definitely went for a more modern architecture, and we have a really eclectic use of materials on the front of the building, and we spent a lot of time with Ali, kind of going through and making sure that we were differentiating each individual unit as the corridor plan states, and that's really a big focus, and that was really where we focused a lot of our attention. I think because our parcel has such a narrow frontage, we just didn't feel like going in that commercial direction on this particular parcel was going to make as much of an impact as if we really focused on materials and focused on the quality of the architecture.
All right.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I agree with that statement completely, because I went down to look at the plot and everything else, and I mean, frankly, what you're proposing at this point in time is going to be a tremendous improvement to that area.
Yeah, I agree.
Tremendous improvement. And so, just by that alone, I mean, I think that you've done everything that could be possible to make that just a great project to start with. I mean, I think if we've approved the Harbor Corridor guidelines at this point in time, I mean, I don't see why we need to go any further with that. You know, we've gone through that, you're doing a great job with this particular proposal, you've revised it based on what staff has basically asked for, and good luck with it.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, great, thanks. I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and/or motion. Commissioner Becerra?
I just wanted a little bit of clarification on the question that Commissioner Bauer asked. Did Mr. Noinix, I hope I pronounced that right, Commissioner Verino, did he follow up with the phone call or any, I guess, reasoning as to why he would be opposed to this project?
No, staff, I replied to his email and never heard from him.
Okay, so this is all we have?
That's all that we have. That's the only communication.
Thank you. I appreciate, given the size, or the configuration of the lot, the way that City Ventures was able to lay it out, it looks very efficient, you're able to get some amenities in there that makes sense for this development, so I think you guys did a fantastic job on that.
I agree. Commissioner Bauer?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't voicing any sort of, the project looks great, I mean, it's a great look, and I sort of, I guess my concern is that we don't have the subcommittee, and I guess that's a concern that we'll have to raise for another day, but it's, these are the kind of issues that I think we need to address in the scope of the subcommittees that we had, I thought were going to be a regular occurrence, but, and I know it's difficult at this point, when it comes to the Planning Commission, to voice these concerns, because the applicant has been, it sounds like they've done everything and maybe more so than required of any other applicant, so it's sort of somewhat unfair at this point to sort of say, well, maybe we should do this things, do this thing in a different way, so. But I'll support the project.
Commissioner Mill?
Real quick, not to discount your comments, but we had gone through such a long process with the Harbor specific plan, that, I mean, we kind of laid out a guideline what we wanted to see there, so then to come back and say, now we want you to go through another process, I just think that was kind of really the whole purpose of the years, I don't even know how many years.
Three years, three years.
That we went through the Harbor specific plan, and then to say, okay, well, here's the guidelines that we've set for you, and then, I agree, that we want to get the most palatable, and I have, I'm not discounting your comments, I'm just, I just believe that that was the whole point of approving the Harbor specific plan, was here's, here's what you guys can do, now bring it forward, and then to say that, okay, after they bring it to us, that then they need to go through another review process, I think that was what the whole purpose of getting the Harbor specific plan in place was to avoid having to do that.
I think Commissioner Bauer is referring, it's almost like a separate subject in a way, I mean, we have a design review committee.
No, I'm.
And I think he was just saying, not to, we would have liked to have seen that in the designer, not that we wouldn't change it necessarily.
No, I agree, I understand completely what he's trying to say, I'm just saying that in this particular case, we have a, we had the Harbor specific plan, the project on First Street, that you guys did a tremendous job getting, I think, the best, the AMPAL project, that you guys got the most out of it. We don't have a specific plan, that they're, we're using the guidelines of the specific plan, however, they're not under that. So I'm just saying that in this particular case, while I understand and I appreciate where he's coming from, I just don't think that in this particular case, because we already have the Harbor specific plan that tells them already what they can and what they can't do, I think that was the whole point of the tedious process that we went through was to, so you don't have to do that down the road. I'm not discounting what you're saying, I agree with you. With that, I just, my one comment about the project is, again, I appreciate the fact that you're going to build the affordable units onsite as opposed to writing a check. I always appreciate it more than when you do, when they actually build the units than cutting a check. I think the easy way out is to write a check and say, okay, you guys do it, the fact that you're doing it onsite is something I greatly appreciate, and thank you for that.
Commissioner Becerra?
Well, I just want to say, I actually agree with Commissioner Bauer as far as the, having it come to the committee, completely agree, we have the Harbor Corridor plan in place, and the applicant obviously understood it, they were able to work with staff and have it done, but I know from my experience, it's always helpful when you're doing a project like this to kind of get a pulse check on at least what some of the commissioners are thinking. I know for all of us, we receive inquiries all the time individually about looking at projects before they come to us, and I know that, you know, if for some reason we appear decide to start trying to redesign their project, that becomes a nightmare for the applicant. So to, you know, kind of fit it into the process is ideal, and in fact, during the Sunshine Ordinance, I thought it was great when Jay Trevino actually was able to fit that pre-applicant meeting into the process as opposed to tacking on another 30, 60, 90 days, which obviously is a nightmare, given whatever deal is set up for the purchase of the land. So I agree with Commissioner Bauer, yes, we have standards in place, if anything, it just makes the design review committee's job much easier, because instead of having a blank open slate of, well, what could go there, what do you think? Now you have some parameters, so, and, you know, this committee, the design review committee has done a great job on previous projects, so I would just encourage staff, that is, even with specific plans, if you're able to get that in there without costing the applicant any time, that would be appreciated.
I think I would be, just to clarify also, our committee is fairly new, you know, we're just, except for the applicants, if I were what, design review committee, but it is fairly recent, and we are trying to melt it in at the same time, so that, if, for example, had we, a year ago, this had come up, then we would have had a chance to chime in, but frankly, I think it's, being on the design review committee, I'm quite pleased with the outcome, the design of it's great, I like the contemporary architecture, so I'm biased toward contemporary architecture. So I think that, you know, I'll certainly be supporting it. But, is there any other questions or comments internally before we go ask for motion?
Commissioner Bauer?
Well, just real quickly, I think what Ali was saying was that there is some discretion, even, certainly there are clear rules, or not so clear rules, I should say, I mean, that's, and that's why we have a planning commission, I mean, and that's within our purview, within those guidelines and within those rules, if there is play and there's discretion, and I'm hearing that there is, and it's based on what's transpired before that, and so things evolve and they move, they're not static, they're not a static body of law, it's just like the law, you interpret it, and that's what we, that's what of law, it's just like the law, you interpret it, and that's what we, that's what our function is, and if in fact, everything on Harbor Boulevard is, has a commercial look, and everything is being approved along those lines, I think it's within our discretion, within our right and within our obligations, really, as a planning commission, to take it in that direction, so, while there are some guidelines, I don't disagree, and that's why I'm approving this, because these applicants have complied, and they went through the planning, or the planning department complied with what they requested, but I think it's certainly within our right to opine on that and to alter where we can, where we believe we should.
If Steph can interject here, I think it's good, I think it's good counsel, excuse me, we need to, but again, this is a new design review committee, this subcommittee is a new function, and we will be looking at, at sort of the bar, we're not going to be bringing alcohol permits to you for, to the design review committee, but the idea that a certain level or size of a project should go before you, or projects in specific locations, that may be a standard that we should consider with you at your next meeting, for what level of criteria you want to see, so, thank you.
Commissioner Mill.
I'm not going to, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, I'm just saying, one of the longstanding complaints I heard about San Ana is that folks don't know what they're getting into when they come here, and that was kind of why we went with this kind of thing, is so that people could know what they're expecting, so, again, I just think if every project comes before us, they think that, oh, here's the guidelines, but then the commission's going to nit, my, just, because I can't think of a better choice of words, going to nitpick apart, I'm not saying you're nitpicking here, but I'm saying to pick apart our project and then redesign it, I mean, that's why we're trying to put these, these specific plans together, so that folks from the outside who are thinking about investing in our city and coming here, that we're making the process easier for them, so that we're more, we're more business-friendly cities, so that they can come in, and as opposed to every project, they're going to have to, you know, we're going to pick it apart and tell them, okay, this is what we want, so, I'll just agree to disagree with you, I understand where you're coming from, I just think that we've put the guidelines in place, and so that folks on the outside who want to invest and buy property and develop in our city know coming in, this is what we expect of them, if this is what we expect of them, and then, but, when you come to the planning commission, they may change it, I mean, we're going to continue with the reputation that, you know, we're hard to deal with, and that's kind of the reputation I'd like to get away with, get away from, so.
Well, what we're doing with the design review committee to add to Commissioner Mill's point is that, that is to make it easier, so in reality, any conversation might have had, we had a, we had a previous project unrelated, we were able to chime in, make a couple improvements, the developer liked them, walked in the planning commission, walked right out with approval, because it already was in front of us, so it actually does streamline it in a lot of ways, and also, it's not a design review committee that people might be used to, such as Laguna Beach and other places that take it to a level of insanity, so, and as an architect, I know all about those design review committees, so the, so I'm sympathetic to architects, so I know the drill, but the thing is, because I'm there myself every, every week, but the, this is a beautiful project, I'm going to encourage my colleagues to support it, and I'd like to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving tentative track map number 2016-01 as condition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, with Commissioner Alderetti participating in a teleconference. Good luck, thanks, great project. So, we're going to move off to a business item, number six, and.
Yes, at your last meeting, you requested that we agendize the issue of commissioner, planning commissioners' email addresses. As you know, before, we've done preliminary requests of the city, as we indicated last week, we had done, staff had done preliminary request of the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office, and it was discussed among the administration, and there was, although there was no written policy on it, the direction was that they did not want to pursue issuing, or assigning email addresses to commission members at this time on a general level. The planning commission did, we reported, staff reported back to you, and the planning commission was concerned that because of your particular role and need for communications, that you may have a different need for that, so one commission, so you did agree to agendize this and discuss it on your meeting, and perhaps direct staff to make a request, a formal request to administration. So with that in mind, you may want to discuss it at this time.
I have a question.
Let me open up for discussion. Commissioner Mill.
What's the, if, if you were to go the, the direction of giving a city email address, what is the fiscal impact?
I do not know the minimum, that there would be any direct fiscal impact, the city has a number of items, it would be seven addresses. Probably of greater concern to staff is that we would be dealing with two sets of emails, personal emails and city emails, so, in terms of our administration, it would be, we would like for you to all go with a city email address or all go with a personal email address, that would be easiest for us to maintain and keep track of.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, from my perspective all along, my proposal has been that we go to city email addresses, and that's it, I mean, in every instance that I've been involved in, in that particular, I mean, if I work for a company, I don't get to use my personal email address, I use a company email address, and every communications that I have is through that company email address, so I don't treat, I don't think I'm treating this anything differently than that kind of a situation, only that it is, it's a public entity, not a private entity, but having been in a public entity in a college district, we were given email addresses, all the communications from staff came to us through those, those email addresses, they did not use my personal email address, and it was very simple, so, you know, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to avoid what was considered to be an at-risk situation, where if somebody out of the blue decides to do a public records, and it's tied to a particular piece of property, and each and every one of the commissioners here had some kind of discussion with that particular person, not only would they be subject, they would all be subject to potentially public records, and Lisa, you said that, I mean, from the very first point, you said, hey, I'm going to get your records one way or another, personal or not, so. Yeah, you know, I'm just.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean.
If you need a personal email, then your, all of your personal emails are going to be sent to you.
Right, and I think, you know, it may not be a concern of all the commissioners, and I'm not sure, I mean, you know, it's been thrown, discussion's been put forth of, well, there's 11 commissions, but how many of those commissions get business cards to begin with? How many of them interface with the public? Very few of them, I mean, you know, my wife is on E-TAC, she's, she doesn't get business cards, and nothing was even said to anybody on E-TAC that, oh, by the way, your personal email addresses could be, you know, used, but I don't see that happening. I could see it happening in this forum, because we are working with a lot of the public, and I think also, just to be on the side of, I think it looks more professional, if I'm showing them, here's a city of San Ana business card, and, you know, I have a city, I have a city email address, that to me looks professional, that's cosmetic, but it looks professional, I mean, but my real point is to say, I just think that if I want to protect myself, and anybody else along here wants to protect themselves, then we should go that route, and it shouldn't be a big challenge, I mean, adding seven email addresses and saying, hey, here's how you access the server, here's your ID, here's your password, no different than what you do on a daily basis, that's all we're asking. And one last thing, to have the emails go through ROSA and then come to us, to me is, you know, I mean, we went back 20 years, we're trying to improve the speed of communication on a daily basis, by, and not to say that ROSA's not doing a great job, she's doing a great job passing them on, but I think her day would be better spent, you know, as, instead of being a conduit, it would be better spent doing what she's doing today.
No, I'm not, your emails would go through the city server at that time, you wouldn't, of course, have access to the city servers, but they would go through the city server, and it, and it would, if you, if you're interested at all right now, what, what happens now is that the calls come through to ROSA or whoever is the acting planning commission chair, and then if she will contact you on whether or not you want their contact information, I'm sure you've all gotten calls from her, and then it's your responsibility to respond. I do know, one of the, one of the concerns that was brought up by the city attorney's office, I remember, was the idea of multiple emails in the Brown Act, that was an issue that was, so, you would have to have that training, that, so that you knew that you can't have, you know, a chain email that includes all, more than a quorum, so.
We actually already had that training when we do our ethics training.
Yeah, I mean, all due respect, it's part of your ethics right now.
We can't do that now.
Right, you can't do it with your personal, so there wouldn't be any real distinction on that between a personal or a city email address, it's just whether or not you want to make, make that request at this time now. You are the only commission that does have business cards, and the city policy is not to give commissions, it's actually written in the commission handbook, not to give commissions business cards, and for, and although I haven't, I wasn't able to track how that exemption occurred, but an exemption was made for this commission, so that's, that's another, that's just another piece of information that you may want to have.
Besides Commissioner McLaughlin, is there any other comments? Commissioner Versera.
So, before Commissioner McLaughlin began his comments, did I understand correctly that we can go ahead and get city emails, we can all get them, and then that would be it? Because it sounded like you said, either you guys got to use personal, or you got to use city, but you guys have all got to use the same, that's what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah, if you decide to get city email address from an administrative standpoint, and if the city council approves that, or the city manager's office approves that, then we would respectfully request that you, it be either all or none, everybody uses the city email addresses, or everybody uses the personal addresses, and it's just a logistics thing for us.
And I think, just from my own personal standpoint, I'll say, that's fine, and also too, if we were issued city email addresses, I would absolutely prefer not to receive anything in my personal email address, I would like to keep it separate, I think, I mean, if I understand correctly from my colleagues, I think that was the whole point of this discussion, was to not use our personal email addresses, and to use exclusively in relation to city and commission business, to use a city email address. I think it's a very long discussion about something that seemed pretty simple, and I would defer to you guys, but I think we should just, I think if there's any other discussion, let's call a vote and move forward.
Actually, if I may.
You may.
Then I'll go after you.
Okay. It was as simple as, when we put it on the website, I went to Gmail and set up a Gmail account specifically for this commission, didn't have to go through the city, didn't have to have the city manager say okay, I just think that, I think we're going, and I, and I understand Commissioner McLaughlin's concerns, but if we're really concerned about it, I mean, we could all go set up a Gmail account specifically for this commission, and we don't have to even worry about going through, through the city manager's office or the city council, I mean, I just think that this is, I mean, if this is that big of a concern, we could easily just set up, you know, accounts just specifically for this, for this purpose, and we don't have to go through, I just think this is a whole lot of, you know, we've talked, but docked this thing to death, you know, if the majority of the folks up here want to have city emails, then, then I'll go along with it, but I, you know, like I said, I went and set up a Gmail account just specifically for this, for that purpose, so, I mean, but like I said, if the majority of my colleagues feel that it's important to have a city email address, I'll support you, because it's, like I said, they said it's all or nothing, but personally, I think we could easily set up a, an email address specifically for our functions here on our own.
Commissioner Reno, do you have any comments on that?
No, I just said, when I found out that my personal email was at risk, I had a very big concern, so I'm on board with city email.
Commissioner Bauer.
I'm on board with the city email as well, I mean.
Commissioner Alderetti, how about you?
Yeah.
You like your city email?
Commissioner Vardner, this is Eric Alderetti. My sentiments are similar to Commissioner Mill's. If I want to create my own account, I can do that for free, without complicating matters with the city, and I don't want to give an impression that any of us are employees of the city, and so, I don't, I think it's a solution to a problem that doesn't exist.
I couldn't quite hear you, Eric, are you saying you're for it or against it?
Against having city issued.
Yeah, okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, there, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I'm sort of echoing what I think I heard Eric say, was that, you know, he does give us in third parties sort of the false impression, maybe, that we are elected officials of the city or employees, I mean, there's a reason why the city council has those official emails, and maybe that we don't, I mean, we're appointees, we're not elected officials, any of us.
Well, then I think that, you know, I might say, if that's the case, then I would go and say, let's not just get, let's not give the commissioners business cards at all, because the fact of the matter is. What?
Yeah, I don't need any business.
I mean, the fact of the matter is, is that.
Never use them.
By, I don't care about the email address being on the card, the card itself says the city of San Ana, and, you know.
And it says planning commission.
Says planning commission and everything else, so I mean.
But it says that along with it, if you send an email, it doesn't say.
But people, but, but the average citizen, the average citizen that sits there and looks at the business card, says planning commission, they're going to sit there and think, well, that's part of the city.
An employee.
An employee, yeah.
Whether, whether it's on our business cards, whether we write it on our hands, I mean, the fact is, is we would still receive communication to an email address, and so it would still open up the emails, regardless of where it's written, the fact is, is staff would send us stuff, we would be using a certain email address for conducting planning commission business, and another thing I would add, just about our commission versus others, we're the only quasi-judicial commission in the city, we actually make decisions that are done, you know, I mean, we have great recommendations from Parks and Rec and E-TAC, but as far as actual making decisions, we make decisions here that actually impact from an applicant that comes into the city, so there are bigger impacts that eventually our emails could be subject to a search that we typically wouldn't have that sort of concern at E-TAC or Parks and Rec.
May I ask one question, Steph?
Certainly.
Canada, you, I think you said that there was an exception made for business cards for the planning commission?
Yes.
Because I remember, if I was on Parks and Recs, we had business cards for.
No other commission has business cards.
We did at that time.
I won't be doing any more. Well, I, I'll throw in my two cents worth. I, I'm perfectly happy with my current business email address being used for planning commission, I'm a volunteer, I'm not a city employee, if they want to subpoena my emails, knock themselves out, I mean, I hardly, the email comes to me from ROSA, pretty much asking permission to contact me for a meeting, that's the extent of it, then I call, pick up the phone and call them, so I'm not writing any dissertations or opinions when I send out an email, because again, that can be put on Twitter, you know, for all I know, so I look at emails, if you want the whole world to know what you're writing, then you write an email, otherwise.
you write an email, otherwise you don't. And so, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm with Eric on this, I guess, I'm not interested in pushing the city to give an email address, so maybe we should just take a vote, and then majority rules, and, and if email addresses are issued, I'll use it, or I won't use it, or won't... So, minor, it's so incredibly minor that I don't care.
If, if I may, if, see, I, I'm kind of with Jim, because it, I mean, I have all my emails come to my phone, and it drives me crazy when folks will send an email to another email, did you get my email? I'm like, no, that's not the email that I, I mean, I'm notified, I'm, I'm sure I could probably set up a city email on here.
You can.
And, and, and all, but, but I'm with Jim, it's much more convenient to come here, and, and if you want to subpoena, I'm, I'm sure there's people out there that, I, in fact, I know there's some, some wannabe journalists out there that like to make public records requests of our, of our city clerk, and they can knock themselves out. You know, they can, they can have access to my emails, there's nothing in there that, that I, like Jim said, I'm not writing anything that I need to be, be worried about in regards to our city business. And, and I do agree with, with Eric, is that, you know, we're not elected officials, we're not employees of the city, and I think that having a city email address gives the impression that we are. We're, we're appointed officials, if, if we don't want people, you know, you, you don't have to serve up here, you know, we, we, we all took, took this obligation freely. And so, I, I, I'm gonna agree with, with Commissioner Gardner and Commissioner Alderetti on this, I, I think this, this is, I think it's much ado about nothing.
Is there any further discussion? Can we put this baby to bed? One way or another?
Well, I, I, I mean, I think...
Because everybody's right.
I think Commissioner Mills suggested an alternative, the middle road, is that we all just set up a Gmail account, which is free.
But even that's more work for yourself.
Well, it's more work, but it's, it solves the problem that I think...
Couldn't they still get your public records?
Commissioner McLaughlin and Becerra are concerned about.
Let me ask one question then, so, a lot of this started because our email addresses, which this commission voted to put online, were taken off the website. So, if we were all to set up, you know, commissionerx@gmail.com, is there some sort of issue of putting those email addresses back on the website?
Yes, that's the city. The city policy is not to put emails on, on the website, yes.
So, we don't solve the problem to begin with.
Right, so we're going right back to square one.
But we've talked about this longer than the problem, because ROSA sends you over, hey, Jim, you want to talk to so-and-so? I go, you bet. There's, we talked about this for an hour.
A solution for a problem.
We're making a problem, we're creating a problem.
How are we creating a problem?
We're, we, if someone wants to talk to us, it's that quick. That's not just my opinion, I have had very little issues with communicating with developers, and anyone wants to call me, half of them have my cell phone, so it's just been no problem. But this is me, and I respect Mark saying, hey, I don't want, I don't want my email, and that, I don't want it. So, it's fair to vote that I want, in cases of people that want a city email, I think as a group, as, as seven people, the majority rules, and I'm just giving you my personal opinion, which, you know, I'm not saying anyone's wrong, it's, it's, I'm personally not worried about it. And I've had good luck with getting ahold of all the developers, so I just think it's more, it's more work, we're making more work out of nothing.
Here, let, let's, I'll, I'll kind of go to, on two things. Number one is, it, it's not even a question of speed of getting the information, that's not the question. That's totally irrelevant, that's all discussion, it really is. Because if somebody calls in and says, hi, I'd like to get ahold of Jim Gardner, she's gonna email it.
Yeah.
But they called in, they didn't email Jim Gardner, they emailed her, they called in. So, I mean, that's, that's totally, that's totally beyond this discussion. This discussion is the privacy of a personal email address, that's the discussion. So, with that said, from my own perspective, I'll make a motion that I'd like to explore the, the, the use of, of city, you know, email addresses for the planning commission, that's my motion.
Second. So, we have a motion and a second.
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we need a roll call vote, so Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Verino?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
No.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Aye.
Commissioner Bauer?
No.
Commissioner Alderetti?
No.
And myself, no.
Okay.
All right, so what do we got there? Three, four, four, four noes and three yeses.
I'd like to make a motion on this issue, that we adopt a policy outlining a consistent use of emails, and that, that policy be that we each separately set up a Gmail account, or a similar policy, so that it's all consistent, and we utilize a formula or a, a format that's consistent for each of us, Bbauer@, BbauerPlanningCommissioner@gmail.com. If that's...
That's a motion. Do I hear a second on that? There's no second.
Sorry, Bruce.
So, the motion fails. So, we move on to the next subject here, which is, excuse absences, but we have no one absent, because Commissioner Alderetti kindly joined us over the phone. Planning manager updates.
First off, I'd like to introduce to you our new planning tech, Pamela Gra, you saw her at the podium today, delivering her first staff report, and she comes to us, she is a, she works part-time for us, and she's a full-time student, she's working on her master's degree in urban planning at UCI, and we are very, very happy to have her with us.
Welcome. I had, I had a good report at lunch about you, so, can do us some good things.
So, in addition to that, I would just, I would also like to, for you to congratulate Ricardo Soto, who was recently promoted to associate planner from assistant planner one, so, the next time you see him, he was, his item was continued, so he's not here, but we're very happy about that as well. And we had our first meeting of the general plan and zoning committee, subcommittee meeting, and it, it went, we were looking at the massage ordinance revisions, and that will be, that one will be coming to you next week, so, or at your next meeting on May ninth. So, other than that, I wish you, thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Anything from the legal sector? Okay. Commissioner Bauer, we'll start with you. You're quiet now.
Well, I got shut down, so...
Commissioner McLaughlin? Commissioner Mills? Commissioner Verino?
I just, I, I wanted to know if we can get an update on what's going on with the Happy Hands car wash on Seventeenth and Baker. They closed down and boarded up, and now it's a huge eyesore, because there's graffiti all around the building, and I don't know if they're in plan check for remodel or what's going on, but we can get a report on that, because it's, it's really deteriorating fast since they closed shop, and so...
I hear they're doing an express wash.
Oh, are they? Well, how, how fast can they get that started?
Well, Ali, do you know anything about that, then? Am I right? Some guy, Bernie?
Yeah, sure. Just come out.
Because I'm one of these car wash gurus in town.
Yeah, my car's filthy since they closed, so...
Go to the first street one.
I know. Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Chairman Gardner, just to provide you a quick update on the car wash there at Seventeenth and Baker, I believe. It has changed ownership and is currently undergoing renovations. Jim, you're, you're correct in saying that it will be a, an express car wash, they're gonna use the same footprint that the building previously had, so it's a legal non-conforming use, which they're allowed to kind of continue. So, I believe there are maybe the second round of plan check at this point, I can get a timeline for you for our next meeting to let you know when they're anticipated to open.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, I mean, the sooner the better, it's just, it's...
What Bernie doesn't know, I'll find out.
I'll say six months, but, you know, we did have them do a few improvements out there to some landscaping and signs, things like that.
So, can we get the new owner to stay on top of the graffiti out there? Because it's, it's getting really bad.
I can place a call into the, to the new ownership to make sure that they get that remedy, sure.
Okay, thank you.
I think we can even call the graffiti hotline, as just...
Well, but I, is it, but it's, would they go on to private property? Because it's gated, so, they, they gated it targets.
That's pretty bad.
They'd have to, like, jump the fence, like the taggers are doing right now.
Maybe we look at some other options, some temporary lighting or something out there to keep the place safe.
It's in tough shape. It was kind of junky to start with, that's really...
Yeah.
It was good.
They still did a good car wash, though.
So, they, yeah, we're working on another express wash now, so...
Thanks, Bernie.
Sure.
Commissioner Becerra? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to welcome her to the, to planning, and we look forward to working with you. Good job on your first presentation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Becerra? I'll echo the great job in the first presentation, yeah, welcome, and I am working with Ricardo on a project, have been for about a year, and that is very good news. I will email him to his city email tomorrow, and tell him, for, for my personal email, no, my business email, and, and congratulate him, that's great news. And other than that, I'm gonna go watch the Ducks game, so what's left of it, so, we hit with that? They're losing, yes. Oh, oh, Eric, yeah. Sorry, Eric, I, I...
Thank you, no, I have no comments.
No comments, yeah, sorry about that, Eric, you know, you're out of sight, out of mind. Anyway, we're adjourned, thanks.
Have a nice evening.
You too, bye.
Bye-bye.
I know, mine was buzzing too, that was...